... July the 12th, 2018. Call this meeting to order. And a declaration of pecuniary interest, they can state it now or later. And we are going to adjust things a little bit and we're going to go to our 11 o'clock delegation from Jill Lumbuck from Getting Ahead. So Jill? Hmm? Oh, Barbara's going to give us the information up front. Thanks Barbara.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Good morning, County Council. We are very fortunate today to have Jill Lumbuck and a lovely group of folks who work with Community Voices and some Getting Ahead programs provide us with an overview of a program we've been operating and we're very proud of. We have many graduates, they're going on to do wonderful things, and I'm not going to give you too much information because I think I'd like you to hear their stories. And afterwards, I'll just wrap up with a little bit for some future consideration as we bring forward a future report. So, thank you. Welcome Jill.
Thanks Barbara. Welcome, welcome to the podium. Nice to see you.
Thank you very much. We are going to be adjusting this because we are all different sizes and faces. Good morning, everybody. Good morning, Warden Halliday and councilors and county staff. It's great to see so many people that are at our Getting Ahead graduations, and for those of you who have never been, the invitations will continue to come. My name is Jill Lumbuck. I'm a Getting Ahead facilitator. I'm also a Bridges Out of Poverty trainer and coordinator of the Bruce Gray Poverty Task Force. We're really excited. We are bringing stories and firsthand experience, so you won't be hearing much from me. I've got my colleagues Sandra Hoyer and Renee Shlonis that are here. They're going to share their journey and their stories through Getting Ahead. The aim of Getting Ahead is for participants to create their own path for making a stable and secure life for themselves and their families. So today, we're going to hear about some of those stories. I'd also like to acknowledge that visiting today, we also have some graduates from Hanover that Mayor Sue Patterson recently met with, and we're happy that they're here to get an experience here at council as well. We're currently carrying out our 30th Getting Ahead session, and that's in Concarden, supported by Bruce County. So last year, we were very happy to expand the program into Bruce County, and it's a really exciting new partnership between Gray County and Bruce County. As of May 2018, we've completed 29 Getting Ahead sessions for a total of 196 graduates, and we have a 92% retention rate from starting on the first day to finishing eight weeks later graduating and meeting you. So I've had the honor of working with both of the women that are going to speak today, and I'm really pleased that they're going to share with you. So I invite Sandra to come up and speak.
Thanks Jill. Welcome. This is Sandra?
Yes.
Ah, welcome. Tell us about your career path now.
Wow. First, I want to say thank you for having us here and giving us the opportunity to share with you the impact that this amazing program has made that you've been investing in since 2009. I went to my employment meeting with OW Nancy Walker in 2016 when I moved up here, and she handed me the flyer and said, "Here Sandra, I think you might like this." And that was about it, because it is very hard to explain the program. I looked at it like, well, it's probably just another back-to-work program that I've been in a multitude of cities and taken, but I said, "Why not? What could it hurt?" Little did I know that it was going to be a journey of assessment and discovery and cultivation like never before. Not just for myself though, for my community as well, which is an aspect that I'd never looked at before. The program made me look at myself, my life, my community through different lenses. It made me realize that my community has as much to do with my success as I do. The people I choose to surround myself with, the way that I choose to put myself out there instead of isolating like some days we'd really like to do, what my community has to offer, and asking for help and asking for what I need when I need it, and finding the resources that I need to be able to live in my life comfortably as it is. I've lived in Gray County three times now. Once as a teenager, once as a new mom, and once as a single mom with teenagers myself. As a side note, I've moved 30 to 35 times in 36 years, which may seem like a bad thing, but 12 of those moves were my family moving for work. After that was on me, but this is part of one of those facts that come up with generational poverty that you don't realize until you're actually looking at it. It was slightly disheartening for me to see in my own graduation that with the community assessment that Owens Sound and Gray County are still facing and fighting many of the same issues that we were 15 years ago. But things are changing. Through the help of people like Francesca and Jill and Poverty Task Force and its action groups, things are coming along. But we do have to change from both ends, which is something that was really interesting for me to learn, from the top down as well as from the bottom up. During the Getting Ahead process, working with the United Way, I've learned that I have a voice. And now, as a certified facilitator for the Getting Ahead program, I advocate for others and encourage others to find their own voices. It truly is difficult to explain what you get out of the program until you've taken the program yourself. I stand before you right now, even though my voice might not sound like it, the most stable I've been in my life so far. Although only I can do the work that it's taken me to get to where I am, the Getting Ahead program and the graduates from every class that I've had since are part of what I credit for me being able to take all the knowledge I already have, add all of their knowledge into mine, and put things into a working order so that I can not only stabilize my life, but thrive and begin to dream again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. (applause) Will you introduce yourself, please?
I'm Renee Shlonis.
Welcome.
Thank you. For the most part of my life, I was given many challenges. I spent a part of my life in foster care. At 16, I was going to school, working, and living on my own. In 2015, I was a mom with a young toddler and a baby. I started Getting Ahead not knowing what to expect. I just thought I would complete my eight weeks and life would continue on. Never would I have imagined my life would take a complete turn. After completing Getting Ahead, I was working on moving forward with my plan when I was approached by housing staff to see if I had interest in volunteering at the Alpha Family Resource Center. Being a resident at the Alpha complex for a few years and a new passion for my community, I of course said yes. June of 2016, I joined Community Voices. A few months later, I became co-chair of Community Voices. With Getting Ahead, I've also had the chance to co-facilitate two Getting Ahead sessions. Over the past three years, I have had many opportunities. September 2016, I was interviewed by the newspaper to discuss the pavilion that residents on Alpha helped build. In 2017, I was part of the Y Housing Landlord/Tenant Videos. September 2017, myself and another co-chair of Community Voices presented to Owens Sound City Council. In November 2017, I joined Rent Save and participated in videos on housing issues. My volunteer position with housing could only last a year, since it was my placement through Ontario Works. After my year was over, I was offered a paid position with Gray County Housing. I became the event coordinator. My second contract with housing was just renewed June 1st. I've been so thankful for the opportunity I've had with housing and engaging with my community. In January 2018, I was involved in the pilot course, Building Emotional Resource. The course helped me work on issues from my past that I didn't realize were affecting my life now. I'm so grateful I took the course because I got pieces of myself back. Not only pieces of myself back, but pieces of me I didn't realize were there. Getting Ahead has brought out my confidence, my courage, my passion, and my love for my community. This year, I was given the opportunity to work at United Way while Sandra was co-facilitating a Getting Ahead session. Also this year, I attended a two-day conference in Muskoka on rural poverty. I've been given many opportunities over the past three years, and I'm so grateful for each of them. When I look back on my life, I see all the pain I endured, the hard times I've suffered. But when I look at myself, I see how strong I've become, the lessons I've learned, and how extremely proud I am of who I am. My future looks bright. I've applied to Conestoga College to continue my education online for community advocacy program. I've gained resources, job opportunities, and experience, networking, and friendships, and I've gained myself back, all from Getting Ahead. I truly believe I would not be where I am or who I am if it wasn't for Getting Ahead. Thank you to everyone who supports Getting Ahead and supports me. I'm so grateful for my life change, and I'm so proud of who I am.
Thank you. Thank you Barb. That's certainly a great program, and I'm glad that you could bring your, some of the graduates today and some of the people that have just recently graduated, is that in the back?
They are, and we're very proud of this program. It's very powerful to hear the stories and the change.
Absolutely.
And what we're changing are opportunities for people, especially for generational poverty. The other piece that's changing is that, community-wide, we're changing perspective of people who live in poverty, and that they, both girls, both ladies referenced the community voice work. I can't even tell you how impactful it is to have a group of people who tell those of us working in administration, "Are you crazy? Do you think that's going to work? You guys have plans for policy, you're thinking in terms of administrative, but really, what we need to think of is how operational are the changes we're making and are the recommendations we make?" So the work these folks do is very, very valuable. Some of our next steps, and you heard earlier, we have almost 200 graduates now, and we have Bruce County involved. As we know, depending where you live in the community, sometimes those borders don't mean anything. You can live in Walkerton and use services in Hanover and vice versa. We've certainly got Wyerton and into, you know, Owens Sound area, all the way along. So what we're doing is we're building a program called Circles. And Circles, we're looking at a small community pilot. Circles is sort of the next level of what folks do after participating in this program. Where do they go now? What do they do? Because things are becoming very open for them. If you've participated and you've learned so many things about yourself and what your barriers were, and you've worked through those barriers, where do you go now? Lots of our graduates have gone on to college, many, many have full-time employment, but they have lots to give still, and there's some work we would like to do with our community to continue that. So there's the mentorships, and I'm not going to get into a lot of it right now, but I will be bringing a report back to you. Again, it's something that we have participated in. It is led by Lampton County here in Canada. They were the first municipality to participate in this, and they're several years ahead of us, but we're gaining ground rapidly, and it's because the program works. So I just would like to thank the folks for coming today. Jill, did you have anything else you wanted to add? Jill is key and intrinsic to this as our lead.
I'm going to take a bow Jill.[770.12][770.12](applause) Thank you.
We build upon the resources in each of the communities. So the only thing I'd like to do, I'd really like to thank the people that come out from your community. And we do touch and we try to access politicians, not just as who you are as influential people and decision-makers, but as part of the community, so that we have that building of mutual respect. And I think that's where, in our current political climate, we need to build more community, we need to be neighbors, and we need to extend out. And that's why the Circles is so important, because it actually extends how we work into the community, more so than just working individually with people. We start to work with mentors and build larger relationships, and that's how people can fight against the isolation that we are seeing amongst our youth and so many of our people in our communities. So that's so important and vital for your leadership on that.
Thank you. That's a new program. You're going to bring a report back?
I will, Mr. Warden. The staff here in the back have been working collaboratively with other agencies, including the college and the public health unit and other intrinsic agencies, the Y, because they're all part of it as well. So again, it's putting it all together and bringing it back with the budget as well. So we look forward to bringing that forward.
Thanks. A very appropriate name, Circles, so that's great.
Exactly.
You're meeting all the things. It's in Angeles. Thank you very much for that, and thank you, everybody, for coming. And you're welcome to stay and see us at work here at council. So that, the other delegation has moved off on to Scott's report, so we'll be dealing with that at Scott's report on the Boulder Estates. Okay, so we're going to go back to three, and we're going to read into the record here that business arising from the minutes, and it was a notice of motion that was brought forward by Councilor Fosbrook at the June 28, 2018 meeting, and it states, "Whereas Gray County current has a, currently, LY, has a whistleblower protection policy as required under the Long-Term Care Homes Act 2017 for long-term care staff only, and whereas the municipal auditor has previously recommended a whistleblower protection policy, and whereas there are several Gray County policies and legislative acts in place that protect staff in the workplace and provide for healthy, safe, and supportive workplace for all employees, one that is free from violence, harassment, discrimination, retaliation from the protection of all Gray County employees. Now therefore be resolved that County Council directs staff to bring back a report by October the 11th, 2018, outlining the current policies and legislative authorities in place that support a safe, healthy workplace for all Gray County employees, and how these policies can be enhanced to further clarify and specify whistleblower protection for all of Gray County staff and ratepayers." Put that on the floor. Councilor Fosbrook, seconder. Councilor McQueen. No discussion. Counsel, Counsel Eccles, and then Counselor Fosbrook.
Is this, I mean, if you have the policies in place, and I think I've always felt that this is very safe, and certainly have been not aware of any issues, so it's, the mover of this motion, are we looking to really, as it's stated in here, that the policies, there's many policies and acts of moving and incorporating it all into one place? Having a concise whistleblower policy document?
No, I think it's, okay, so yeah. Through me, through, I'll ask Counselor Fosbrook if there was any further clarification she wanted to make on this.
Sure. Just waiting to see if Counselor Eccles was done his question, so if that's your question, my answer would be that I understand that there are perhaps elements that are similar to a whistleblower policy in other policies, but given that the recommendation from the auditor, and I quote, "The whistleblower policy would be intended to encourage and enable employees and others to raise serious concerns within the organization prior to seeking resolution outside of the organization without fear of retaliation by others. We recommend that a whistleblower policy be created by the County of Gray." So what I interpret that to mean is that there is benefit, notable benefit, to having a policy that clearly is identified as a whistleblower policy, and not necessarily relying on the interpretation of other policies with perhaps similar wording. Now, as additional background, I understand that the federal government provides whistleblower protection for federal civil servants. I understand the province of Ontario offers the same. When I raised this issue with others at the province, the response that I was given was that municipalities are pretty much on their own to implement this or not. Personally, I believe that it's all fine and good to say that you, you know, have a practice, you have a philosophy, but unless it's clear and known, then really, what do you have? So I think that this is quite important, in fact, vital, to the ongoing health of any organization, to enable and encourage people to raise their hand and say, "You know, I have a question." And to know unequivocally that their input, observations, concerns will be treated fairly, respectfully, effectively, and without any cause for concern of blowback. Counselor Eccles?
Thank you for that input. Counselor Eccles?
If I could further, and I fully support what you're saying, but just in the last couple of lines there, that's what I was driving at, is it to take these policies and put them into a whistleblower? Because it doesn't, and how these policies can be enhanced to further clarify and specify whistleblower protection. I think what we're looking for, what you're looking for, is to develop a comprehensive whistleblower, because as you said, it is, and I'm aware, that it's in a lot of the policies and there, but to clarify it, I guess, here, to develop a comprehensive policy.
I think-
That would be better direction for staff.
I think it's there, and the CEO can comment on it because she knows the, you know, the input, but it is to, I mean, she can make that recommendation with Steph, knowing that where everybody's coming from.
A couple of points for council's consideration. First of all, the auditors made the recommendation that we consider the whistleblower policy, that recommendation was made 10, 10 years ago?
Years ago.
10 years ago, and so at the time, there were some changes within the financial world, and I think this was part of a kind of a movement at that time in response to some of the things that had happened with the financial crisis. The discussion at that time was that there, that Gray County and many other municipalities have already extensive policies in place that would perform that function of providing whistleblower protection. And so it was discussed at that time and determined that, that indeed, we did have the right things in place to protect staff should they wish to come forward and report something. If the direction, so this report, as the way that this recommendation is drafted now, would be asking staff to come back and really provide council with a summary, a comprehensive summary of the coverages that exist, and any gaps that we can identify in that coverage so that you're able to make a decision about whether or not you wish to see us go forward with something more specific or comprehensive. I can tell you that the city of Hamilton and the city of Mississauga have put whistleblower hotlines in place as a way to augment this. I noticed the reference here to ratepayers. I'm not sure, within the context of a ratepayer, what we would be protecting ratepayers from. There is an ability for people to come forward, I'm not sure that, exactly how that works here, but I will say that those places that have put hotlines in place are staffing those hotlines to $40,000 or $50,000 a year, is what it costs them to have that manned on a 24/7 basis and be able to follow up on those complaints. So.
Well, I think the motion gives you a broad enough scope that you can make recommendations and perhaps offer options when you come back. So I think you've heard some of the comments today, and I think that gives you, enhancing is an option, clarifying is an option, specify is an option. So you've got lots of opportunity to look at how to bring it forward. Counselor Eccles?
Well, after the discussion here, I guess I'd put it back to the mover of the motion. Is it just to review the policies, or is it to put it so that staff has a good direction, Counselor Fosbrook, on which direction you're wanting this to go? Because with the back on October the 11th, you know, I think we need more specific direction for staff so that on October the 11th, they're delivering what collectively we are requesting. Because right now, just this Warden said, "There could be this, could be that, could be that." Can we narrow it down?
Comments? Yes?
So I see that there is merit in clearly stating, "Just bring us a whistleblower protection policy." Part of the reason that I fell short of saying, "Just bring us a policy," was because staff has assured me that there are bits and pieces that may be found in other policies. So I wanted to leave the latitude to clarify. And again, the emphasis on to have a policy, to have a protectionist policy that people don't really understand is pointless. So, you know, even, even the policies that we have and where they're published and how often they're reviewed and by who and updated, all of that aside, because I have some points on that, but all of that aside, I think it's important, and what I'm requesting, is that staff clarify and specify, for the sake of those who would use such a policy, one, that it exists, and two, clearly how it is to be used, and with what expected outcome. So I'm not an expert, others have implemented this, apparently it's not an impossibility. I can't tell you what the expected costs are. I would assume that if we anticipate significant costs in managing this, therein lies the answer that we probably should have it.
Okay, so-
If I may, whether or not anyone ever calls the hotline, it would still need to be staffed, and that's where the money, I was not in any way intending to suggest that we have a significant backlog of folks who are not currently able to bring their concerns forward. That wasn't my intent at all, and I apologize if I misspoke.
Well, perhaps I misinterpreted that, you know, to run up a $50,000 tab, you'd actually have to have the phone ringing.
Because it has to, it's an anonymous, separate entity from the municipality.
Third-party. Anyhow, I think, I think we've, unless there's further comments, I'll call the vote on this motion. Yes, Kevin has a comment.
I just want to clarify, this was back when I first became Director of Finance, and there's hardly anybody on the senior management team that exists today that was at that table, so I guess I'm starting to show my age. But at that time, it was the senior management's team and direction that we'd not proceed with that. We felt there was enough protections between union contracts, et cetera, that we did not feel it was, had needed at that time, but I see, I see we can go through this and clarify and make it known where protection is available now through legislation, so.
Right.
But it was under my portfolio at that time, and I just wanted to make, ensure that everybody is clear that it was no one else in this room really had input into that decision at that time.
Thank you very much. Okay, so Counselor Eccles?
Can I offer an amendment that, and ratepayers be struck from this? I'll move.
You want to move an amendment? That's fine.
Well, if it's whistleblower policies and whatnot around staff-
Right, okay.
Ratepayers doesn't come into this, that's a totally different thing.
Fine. You can bring that forward as an amendment, move by Counselor Eccles, the seconder for that?
Sure, I'll second that.
Counselor Bell? That ratepayers be struck from this amendment? Certainly narrows it down. Comment from Counselor Fosbrook, and then Counselor McQueen?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So on the proposed amendment, I mean, I just took this straight from the auditor's comments, which states again, "intended to encourage and enable employees and others to raise serious concerns within the organization." So I don't want to rule anybody out, and, you know, quite possibly, there are ways that ratepayer might feel some repercussions for raising an issue that we haven't even anticipated. So I just took it from the auditor's wording.
I think if-
Well, others is not necessarily ratepayers. Yes, go ahead.
If I could, I guess I'm showing my time around here because I was Warden in 2009 when this came through. The others, I believe, was in contract employees and others, because the important part there is within the organization.
Right.
Ratepayers, the organization serves them, but they are not within. It's contract employees, whatever, to my remembrance of that from where the auditor was going with that.
Thanks for that clarification. Any other discussion on that amendment? Yes, Counselor McQueen, sorry, you were there, sorry.
Thanks, Warden, holiday. I guess that I see no reason for deleting the ratepayers, I mean, I could think of numerous instances where a ratepayer maybe have a, have a concern that would be phoned in, and there could be, on the part of staff, I'm not saying there would be, but there could be upon repercussions of it, so I don't necessarily think, and I mean by stating it that way, I think it allows the ratepayers to have an understanding that there is a, there is a mechanism for them to get their concerns or issues brought, brought before county council, so I don't necessarily think that having that in there is a bad thing.
Thank you for that. There are other mechanisms that we have today, ombudsman and.
Yes, exactly, the ombudsman, the police, there are many avenues that someone could bring forward a concern if they.
Integrity Commissioner, so there are new things that we've.
And all of those costs, ombudsmen, integrity commissioners, all costs, where this could be handled internally.
Okay, I understand where you're coming from. Any other comments? Call the motion on this amendment? All in favor of this motion?
To be clear, we're voting on the amendment.
The amendment, and ratepayers be removed.
Yeah, okay.
Just the amendment.
So, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
Nine. Opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, so that motion is, will be, the amendment will take place on the motion, and then we will vote on the motion. We got a mover and seconder on that? Counselor Fosbrook and Counselor McQueen. Okay, so, unless there's further discussion, I'll call that motion. All in favor of the motion as amended? Opposed? The motion is lost. Okay, that being the will of counsel, we'll now move on to the consent agenda. That the following consent agenda items be received, and that staff be authorized to take the actions necessary to give effect to the recommendations in the staff reports, and that correspondents be supported or received for information as recommended in the consent agenda. Put that on the floor, motion, on the floor. Looking for somebody to make the motion. Counselor McQueen, Counselor Bell seconding it. Any discussion? No, just. Nothing being pulled in, so therefore, the motion, yes, Counselor?
Could you use your mic? Thank you.
The representative from Chatsworth with regards to correspondence number four, just regards to your, your resolution, I don't know if you have a, just a comment of, of your thoughts?
For direction, is it okay if I respond, Ms. Warden?
Yeah.
Okay, it's not really the procedure, but, okay, all right, so I.
I don't see anybody jumping up and down, that you're not talking, that you're allowed to talk.
She's got a sore knee, she can't.
Thank you. Brief.
Okay, so very, very briefly.
Why you, why you felt it had to go through that route?
We wanted a little more freedom with, in our township, just to decide on some of the planning issues, our, our planner is with us, by coincidence, not for this purpose, but we are an area that is heavily populated with agriculture designation, and we have a fair amount of aggregates that limits where development can take place. We do have some areas that we feel are developed now to some extent, and that if we allowed some freedom, that would enable us in residential, or not rural area, not residential, to maybe enhance those areas, they are pockets within our community, that, that would be a benefit to us. We're trying to enhance our tax base, which is very difficult with the amount of agriculture and aggregate lands that we have. So we're looking to the future, areas that this will work, not every area that's rural, but we do see areas that it would work.
Thank you for that, and I also talked briefly to Scott yesterday, as I was passing, and said, they've taken that into consideration with a lot of other information that is being presented to them, so, county planning staff will, will have, have heard what you want, and will consider it, all right, so. All right, any further comments on this, Counsel, yes?
Not on this one, but on C, just a quick comment, it doesn't need to be pulled, tremendous program, and if any schools are out there looking to be good community stewards, and raise a little bit of funding for any of those school trips that are required, the numbers are there to show that it works well.
Right, and I, I do think that that's important, and I see some schools are going to act as pilots and models, so the opportunities there, yeah, Counselor McQueen?
Thank you, and just, I guess toward the correspondence from Chatsworth, you know, Counselor, you, you mentioned, you know, aggregate and, and agriculture, and I believe that you should give a bit of consideration that by creating five lots on a hundred acres, your conflict, or chances of conflict between those people that are going to buy those and build houses, are going to be fairly significant, especially to do with agriculture and, and, and aggregate extraction, so it's a bit of a double edged sword, I'll just allow, just leave that comment at that.
Thank you, and I'm sure that our planning staff will consider all aspects of that request. No other, yes, Counselor Maggie?
Well, just for clarity, for Counselor McQueen, we were looking at in our rural areas, understanding that we wouldn't have any more severances in the aggregate or the agricultural area, so we were simply looking at the rural areas.
We should have pulled it, but anyhow, we, we pulled it without pulling it, so anyhow, I think the comments are, are there, and I'm going to call the motion, all in favor of the consent. Thank you very much. I, my knuckles got wrapped, so, I understand.
Point of clarity, Mr. Warden. When we have a motion on the floor, we can still discuss the motion on the floor. Why you have a motion on the floor if you can't discuss for information? I asked for information, I didn't ask for the whole depth of, of us discussing it around the table, I asked for clarity from the, from the information, that's all I asked. I think for clarity through the, through our procedure, I can ask for clarity.
Thank you, we'll review that comment.
The consent agenda, the consent agenda's process is to put administrative things through without note or comment, so if they want to be discussed, if you want to ask questions, or provide clarification, or get some staff input, then that's the process for it being pulled, and then we can discuss it fully. To put those administrative pieces through, so that counsel can move on to the items that need a larger discussion.
Just to follow up on that, Mr. Warden, I've seen us pull stuff, and half the friggin' room leaves, and we get to it at the end of the agenda, and then you may miss the opportunity to have that discussion, so.
Well, duly noted, and as the chair, I will say that today's discussion got a little longer on one topic than I wanted, but anyhow, we'll move forward to the next item for direction and discussion, and I'm going to bring forward that addendum to report PDR CW 2118 be received, and that all written and oral submissions received on the resubmission plan of subdivision 42T 2013-04, known as the Bolter Estates, were considered the effect of which helped to make an informed recommendation and decision, and that in consideration of the draft plan of subdivision application 42T 2013-04, for lands described as part of Lot 5 Jones Range Geographic Township of Kepel. In the township of Georgian Bluffs, the Gray County Committee of the Whole approves this plan of subdivision to create a total of 22 single detached lots, subject to the conditions set out in the notice of decision. Put that on the floor, Counselor Echols, seconder, Counselor Barfoot. Scott Taylor will be speaking to this, thank you, Scott.
Great, I'm just gonna pull up a presentation. So, thanks, Warden Halliday, and members of the committee of the whole. So what we have before us is a proposed plan of subdivision, which was actually just recently before the same committee as a, as an information report a month or so ago, and we had a public meeting on this one on June 20th, 2018. The subject lands are located just off Gray Road 1, between Wyerton and Oxenden, across from the airport lands. The lands are about 7.1 hectares in size, and, and as the warden read out through the motion, they are proposing 22 new lots. The 22 new lots would be off of a new road, and maybe if I could just flip back, the new road would connect that road you see in the north there to the road in the south, so it would connect Galloway Road to Wilson Drive and, and Sunset as well. The proposed lots will be serviced via municipal water, which would come from Wyerton and private septic systems. The subdivision was originally draft approved in the year 2015, we had a hearty discussion back then, and the, the subdivision lapsed earlier this year, which is why we're going back through the same process. The, the subject lands are in the escarpment recreation designation, which does promote residential growth in that regard. These lands are under the Niagara Escarpment Commission and the Niagara Escarpment Plan, and therefore, no zoning is in place for these lands. The Niagara Escarpment development permits have been, been approved for this one, so when the subdivision lapsed, they didn't need to come back and, and reapply for those development permits, because those approvals are, are still, are still ongoing, and as I noted, we did have the public meeting here a few weeks ago in the township council chambers. We've received a number of agency comments on this one, it's fair to say that none of the agencies had any concerns, as, as the proposal was the same as what was approved in 2015. Both the township of Georgian Bluffs staff and Niagara Escarpment Commission staff had some administrative changes and, and minor tweaks to the wording of the draft conditions, but no tweaks to the plan itself. We did hear some public feedback for sure on this one, both in, in written format and from the, the, the public meeting. Kristin Perrant, John Perrant, John Perrant Senior, Catherine O'Hagan Todd, Jim Mosgrove, Norma Mosgrove, Frank Stobitz, Ed Howe, and Helen Grant all provided comments. We did actually also receive one further letter last night from Crystal Lee and Patrick Sainamore, with some additional comments similar to some of the comments that have been raised, I'll just go through some of those here now. We did hear a number of comments that the proposed subdivision would have impacts on, on neighboring homeowners and neighboring cottage owners, there was concerns about its impact on the environment, and particularly impacts on both the bay and the shoreline, there was concern about where there would be access to the bay and the shoreline, concerns over drainage and stormwater management, and perhaps the biggest level of concern with respect to this development was with respect to the road. The neighbors in this case that, that spoke up didn't want to see a through road in this location, and would rather see a cul-de-sac rather than have it connecting to Wilson Drive. They were concerned with the level of traffic that these 22 homes would generate, they were concerned about the safety of using existing roads, they were concerned about which roads construction traffic would use, and whether or not it was more appropriate to simply have a new access point out to Gray Road 1. There was questions over why a traffic study was not completed for this development, and then moving away from the road concerns, there were some general questions on noise, public health, property values, there were some questions as to whether or not all these benefits from the connected road that the county had been touting would cause their taxes to go down, and then there was some procedural concerns about the timing for this application, the timing for both the public meeting and the committee of the whole meeting today, in that they were on weekdays and, and made it tough for cottagers from out of town to get up to, to these meetings, and there was concerns over procedures on the subdivision, or procedures for notification on the subdivision application. With respect to the concerns that were raised, county staff and along with township staff did review these concerns, and we did take them seriously, and, and I'm aware that there's some neighbors that feel like their concerns weren't listened to, and, and I can tell you, they were listened to and they were investigated, but in some cases, we didn't agree with the recommendations of neighbors, and, and it's unfortunate to have to explain this to people that, that it may be a difference of opinion, but county staff and township staff really do see benefits to, to a connected road here. Those benefits come both from, from a maintenance and servicing perspective, in terms of not having to, to plow a cul-de-sac and being, being able to go right through, but they also come from a public health and safety perspective, and, and having additional accesses allows for better potential access for emergency vehicles, it also creates better flow for both pedestrians, cyclists, and automobiles between the different neighborhoods. In this case, a traffic study was not requested, because they're looking at a relatively small number of lots, and I realize to the neighbors that are living next door, 22 new lots may not seem like a small number. In the scope of what we're used to reviewing for a subdivision through the county, that is a relative, relatively moderate size. Generally speaking, we don't ask for traffic studies unless there's 50 or more lots or units that would be coming back out onto the county road. We do have policies in our county plan that promote a connected road network and, and discourage the use of cul-de-sacs, except, except where they're, they're necessary, and, and as such, county staff didn't feel that the impact of these 22 new homes would be undue impact on the existing road network or those existing cottage and homeowners in that area. With respect to the, the stormwater management and the drainage, there were some clarifications made by the engineer at the public meeting, which may have, have addressed some of those concerns. I think some of the concerns still exist, but the, the key point here is that the existing stormwater and drainage won't change, there won't be any additional flow onto neighboring properties. One of the questions from the public, public was why the, the stormwater can't be directed back towards the central water course, which you can see roughly in the, in the center of that drawing. In this case, we chatted with the Gray Sawal Conservation Authority about that, and they didn't want to see new drainage directed there for fish habitat reasons. As such, they're, they're going to use ditches and, and existing drainage channels to, to deal with the drainage in this regard. Based on the fact that there was no increase in the offsite drainage, both township and, and county staff were satisfied here that it would meet the standards, I should note that the Conservation Authority has also signed off, and there are further draft conditions that would, would require sign off on the detailed design from, from the township and the Conservation Authority in that regard. As such, staff are, are of the opinion that the proposed plan of subdivision has regard for matters of provincial interest under the Planning Act, it is consistent with the provincial policy statement and does conform to the goals and objectives of the county plan. As I said, it is very, the, the plan is the exact same as the 2015 plan, and the only change to the draft conditions have been administrative in nature, and there's been one further draft condition added to direct construction traffic away from Wilson Drive, which was in response to some of the neighbors' comments, so hopefully that should help ease some of their concerns, at least with respect to construction traffic, but I'm well aware that their concerns have not been addressed with respect to having a cul-de-sac versus a through road. As, as the warden read out at the beginning of this, staff are recommending that the report be received, and that, and that the 22 new lots be draft approved in this regard, similar to the 2015 version. That's all I have, but I'd be happy to take any questions if there are any.
Thank you, Scott, that was a good presentation. Any questions of Scott? Yes, Counselor Barfoot?
Just a comment, I guess, for counselors around the table, if you know of a subdivision agreement that's coming up and looks like it's going to be expired, make sure you get on them, so that you don't have to go through this process again.
Oh, yes, Counselor Greenfield?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, thank you, Scott, good report as always. What is the current speed limit on Sunset Boulevard and Wilson Drive? Is that, is that an 80 kilometer?
No, in this, in this case, sorry.
Go ahead.
Through the warden, in this case, it, it would be, I would say a 50 maximum, if, if not a 40, they are, you know, residential roads, they're not, they're not an 80, or they're not a, a road like Gray Road 1, they're definitely residential in nature, and it would be a slower speed limit.
Okay, thanks for that, yeah, that, that answers my question, and there had, there had been some, some discussion about the increase in traffic creating safety concerns, I just wondered if speed limit could be, could be adjusted, but it sounds as if, if the speed limit is already lower, that shouldn't be a huge problem. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for answering that, yes, anybody else have any comments? Counselor McQueen?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you for bringing that report forward, as a question I do have is, with the NEC, is I know that it's approved, but generally, there are three year permit, so hopefully, 2015, I see Ron at the back there, I'm trying to think, was it 215 or 216 when it finally got the NEC permit, so I know it's three years, as long as it's, I think the conditions. So I know it's three years, as long as it's, I think the conditions are, as long as it's moving forward, they will respect that. But do you need clarity on that?
In this case, through the warden, the original approvals from the NEC lapsed a few years back, and they went through this same process with the NEC and reapplied. And so my understanding is the resubmitted development permit applications are still valid in this regard and have not lapsed.
I know they're only good for three years, so long as this gets approved through this stage, then they'll stay in place too. And I think, as I understand, through a development permit through NEC, as long as you're moving forward, or it'll lapse too. So it's only good for three. I know we're trying to change it. Oh, really? Okay. Well, I know they're three, and I know we're going to have discussion around five.
All right, so duly noted. And yes, Councilor Fosbrook?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Thank you, Scott. So the public meeting that took place was a joint public meeting?
Through the warden. In this case, no, it was a county public meeting. It was hosted by the township just because of proximity, and they were nice enough to put it on to one of their existing councillor committees, the whole agendas. But as the county was the only one that had a application here, it was a county meeting, and Councilor Barfoot chaired on behalf of the county that evening.
Okay, thank you for that. So what I didn't see was clearly what the agenda for that public meeting comprised of and the minutes.
They're there. They're in consent.
Oh, so I apologize, the agenda. So when I looked at the link of the documents, I wasn't clear on what information was provided at the public meeting.
Sure. In this case, yeah, the public meeting, the information that was provided was all of the reports and studies that are posted on our county website, and that was sent out to members of the public within 120 meters, and also those that had requested notice on the original application, and my original information report that was presented to committee about a month ago. And those were generally the materials that were made available to the public. In terms of the regulations that were read that night, there was a summary read of all the public comments and agency comments that were received to date, and the public were notified of their appeal rights and the changes through the local planning appeal tribunal in that regard. And as was noted, the minutes are on the consent agenda for this meeting here.
Right.
For that.
And I guess I was just trying to, because between how it happens in other instances and how it might happen here, so it's not like you can go to one document and say, these are the documents that were available at the time of the public meeting? Like, I'm looking at the link, and do I just assume that all of that information was there?
It was available.
In this case, there have been no new documents added to the county website since the public meeting. The only new document that was presented that evening was the PowerPoint presentation that was made at that meeting, which outlined the application and outlined the comments received and the appeal protocols.
Okay, and if I may, was there an actual planner's report presented at the public meeting?
In this regard, just to inform the public and to inform members of Georgian Bluffs Council that were there that night, they had shared a copy of my staff report to this committee of the whole as information, but they weren't looking for any direction from Township Council on that report. It was just a background resource, if you will.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Any other comments? No other comments, we'll call the vote. All in favor? Motion is carried. Thanks, Scott. Good report. Okay, we're going to ask Ann Marie to come up now. We're going to bypass B right now, and move on to C, which is that report HDR CW 1518 regarding tender award recommendations for Allan Hastings Limited for RFT HOU 1218 be received, and that the tender be awarded to Allan Hastings for $417,936 excluding taxes, and that the project deficit of $102,91.67 including non-refundable taxes will be funded from any surplus realized from within the 2018 housing capital construction budget, or if a surplus is not available, from the housing reserve. Read right? Yep, okay. So put that on the floor. Councilor Burley, Councilor Bringle seconding that. Discussion.
Thank you very much. This tender, we did put this tender out originally, I think it was beginning of May, and we received no bids on it. So we did put it out again with a start date in the fall. It is for 53 bath rebuilds. The bathrooms themselves are the original to the building, which was built in 1973. We did set some parameters of the tender, so removing all of the plumbing fixtures, lights, tubs around, installing all of the new cabinets, lights, tubs around, electrical switches. And I apologize, it says paint bathroom door and frame. We're actually going to paint the whole bathroom, not just the door and frame there. There should have been a comment on repaint bathroom and door. And it did come in over budget by $92,936 plus taxes. We had based this, we did two bath rebuilds last year. The first one we did came in at $48,000, or $4,800 per bathroom, and the next one came in at $6,000 per bathroom. The bathrooms are the same size and same materials, so this year they came in at $7,800 per bathroom. We did contact our low bidder to see if there was any wiggle room, and we weren't successful in that either. So if you have any questions about it, I can certainly answer. We do have reserve funds in order to accommodate the $100,000 if necessary, that we don't find savings within our own budget. And I'll take questions on that.
Thanks, Ann Marie. Any questions of Ann Marie at this time? Councilor Bell?
Well, Ann Marie, I congratulate you on your tenacity in getting us some more tenders. To have none the first time around, I think speaks volumes about the construction business, and they're busy. Second item, I guess, $8,000 for a bathroom rebuild. If any of us tackle something like that, I think it's going to be $8,000. And, you know, it's going to be more probably, but $100,000. Yeah, my own skills, yes. But 50-some lot, 50-some bathrooms, and you're over by $2,000. But you're going to get the job done, and I know it's got to be done, and if you can accommodate the overage in your department, I think it's good business. So I'm in favor of moving forward with that, and congratulations once again. It's something that needs to be, had to be done for a long time.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other questions? One quick question. I assume the fixtures that are being used are all specified by you, and they're meeting your specification?
Yes, they are.
Okay, that was the only question I had. All right, let's call the motion. All in favor? Thank, motion is carried. Thank you, Ann Marie.
Thank you.
Okay. So I think we'll run this right through to the, and you want to? You want to have lunch, I'm told, in our new dining orders? And maybe the CAA will tell you what she's done there, and compliment them on act order. And we're going to present that report TR CW 3818, autonomous vehicle test corridor be received, and that the County of Gray participates in the Ontario Good Roads Association Preferred Autonomous Vehicles Initiative, and that this matter be referred to staff to develop a list of preferred routes within the county. Patrick.
Oh, mover and secker.
Oh, mover and secker. Boddy and Bell. EB.
We can do that. Okay, thank you, Mr. Warden. This is basically what I would say is a very simple report on a very complicated topic. So we received a letter from OGRA requesting that the County of Gray participate in the OGRA Preferred Autonomous Vehicle Initiative. What that kind of means, they want, basically know who the point of contact is going to be, and they'd like an establishment of some preferred routes. There's a lot of reading in this report, that link to their white paper, and if you're so inclined, there's a lot of autonomous vehicle documentation out there. That being said, the manufacturers aren't being overly forthcoming with what they have in mind. I mean, you know, it's all business secrets and that type of thing. So this is basically just OGRA's chance to take a unified approach. That's kind of their big thing. They want a unified approach on a corridor, get in on the, kind of working as a team on a corridor basically from Windsor to Ottawa. So what that means for us, I mean, if you're going from Windsor, Ottawa, and you're here, you're lost anyway, but, so I don't know what their corridor means. They're just looking for us all to, and they're looking for a cross-section of roads, too. So they've been specific, they say high-volume roads, low-volume roads, gravel, but they don't really specify what low-volume roads mean. Our high volume is someone else's low volume. So we're kind of working with them just to try to figure out, basically, they're looking for roads to maybe test on, to, you know, avoid pedestrians and avoid, Mennonites would be a group that we would probably want to avoid, just because we're not sure exactly how the autonomous vehicles would work. But still with the criteria, so they've given us our preferred, maybe, and avoid. So that's kind of what they're looking for, all our roads to go into one of those systems. And they're going to have a subsequent meeting on the topic, and working on this map to figure out how this network is going to work. Legally, the Highway Traffic Act does allow for autonomous vehicles, but you still have to be the driver behind the autonomous vehicle. So that driver is still responsible for controlling the vehicle. So it's not against the Highway Traffic Act. We're looking just to pass this motion to basically work with OGRA, figure out how this is going to roll out going forward, and get them some information on where our preferred routes would be.
Councilor Ickles.
So do we get into this, go to OGRA and say, we'd really, you know, it would be really great, we've appointed Pat Hoy. Pat, you be the messenger and tell them, when we get medium connectivity in Gray County, we'll connect these autonomous vehicles to the grid? Because the question is, how much connectivity up and down do we need? Because we've heard that from the agricultural community when it comes to GPSing and everything like that, that, you know, some people have the equipment, but we can't run it because I can't get connected to the cloud to be able to get my combine to go up and down the field. Or where are we, I mean, are we chasing a dog here that we're never going to catch?
You certainly can comment on that.
Yeah, I mean, to me, it's just, it is one of those unknown questions, because we know so little about what exactly they have in mind. But I know what you mean, there's that, they're just trying to kind of get ahead of it, I guess, even though we're probably already behind it, right?
And it's not even, you know, it's high-speed internet, a great connectivity. I can lose a phone call three times between here and Durham on Highway Six. And I'll tell you, on County Road Three, it's a lot worse. Especially when you get into Georgian Bluffs and Chatsworth.
Well, that's it, I didn't want to point.
That's why we supported Swift. Okay. All right. Any further discussion relevant? Yes, Fosbrook?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So looking at the resolution, that the County of Gray participates in the Ontario Good Roads Association Preferred Autonomous Vehicles Initiative. What does that mean? And furthermore, this matter be referred to staff to develop a list of preferred routes within the county. I'm not an expert in this. I would not be waving the flag, say, sure, we'd love them in Southgate. I don't think we'd love them in Southgate, yet. So what is the implication of what you're going to proceed from this point forward for the municipalities in the county, and what should we know about who might be driving up and down the roads? I mean, already we're having issues with, you know, encounters with other vehicles, with bicycles. You mentioned horses. What does this mean?
We will hear the words now.
And through you, Mr. Warden, yeah, that's some of the questions we have as well. We know that they would like a preliminary list of all the roads. We're not sure exactly what impact that's going to have, or what exactly they're even, you know, they're taking a unified approach, but we don't know exactly what they're looking for. So they're going to have subsequent meetings to this before they start doing any sort of testing with this initiative. So that's kind of where we're just trying to kind of get in the loop and be part of the kind of development team with whatever way OGRA is going to go.
So do you think there's any likelihood that we're going to see autonomous vehicles on our roads before you get back to us with what's going on with this initiative?
Well, that is hard for me to answer through you, Mr. Warden, but I would think it's unlikely, but.
Right. Okay, this, the CEO has some comments.
I just wanted to add that, you know, this is an opportunity to participate in the discussion. I think one of the things that we've heard from the policy side and places that are perhaps further ahead than we are with the development of this technology and how it will be used and regulated in their jurisdictions, is that rural places are not very well reflected in that planning and study part of things. So OGRA, I think, took that to heart and was trying to make sure that, you know, as this technology evolves, rural Ontario isn't entirely left behind, that there is an opportunity to try this out and see what's needed. We know that there will be some real fundamental changes about the way that signage has to happen. It has the potential to impact ultimately how roads are designed and all that sort of things. So we want to support them in getting more information, but it's very early days. I don't know that we know right now, other than they were just trying to get a sense of what the scope was as far as places where they could test. And so the question for councillors, do you want to participate really at all in this? Or do you not? And then, given that, it will be up to staff to work with OGRA and try and refine what that looks like within the boundaries of Gray County.
Thank you for that. Councilor Barfoot?
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Well, I think what it does, it puts us at the table, and we can either say we want to stay, or we don't want to stay, but at least we know what the ground rules are.
Like saying no when the automobiles came out. All right, any other questions? Call the vote. All in favor? Thank you, that's Carrie. So next up is a report that Jody's going to bring us, that report ITR CW 418 regarding Microsoft 365 license agreement be received, and that staff be authorized to enter into a procurement agreement with CDW Canada Corp. and approved ECM, Ontario Education Collaborative Marketplace supplier, to provide Microsoft 365 licensing for three years, July 18, 2018 to July 2021, at the estimated cost per year of $223,680.32 plus applicable taxes. Put that on the floor. Councilor Mackey, Councilor Patterson, second. Jody, have a go.
So I'd like to just give you a little bit of background of where we are with Microsoft licensing, and what sort of led up to this report today, and what we're hoping in terms of new technology or a new licensing agreement with Microsoft. So Gray County, like any other government agency and most organizations, relies on Microsoft for different products for running the corporation. We have Microsoft Office, which is the products like Word and Excel that you'll be familiar with. We have Microsoft Exchange, which is the software that runs our corporate email. We use their databases, and on top of that, just to build the network, you need a large number of different licenses, different licenses for individual users or for the network, the devices that connect to the network. We have different models for purchasing those, I suppose. Office and Exchange, we buy them outright and license the individual users, and then when we decide it's time to upgrade, and it has to be done, we make a new purchase. The licenses that are tied to individual users, we sign multi-year agreements like this one, and ours is expiring this year. And they renew every year, and you're basically responsible for being honest with Microsoft over what you use and truing up your usage at the end of the year. They will periodically audit their customers to make sure that the customers are compliant with the terms of the agreement, but you can basically use what you want. And then you pay for it when your term is up, or when the year is up. So Microsoft is really moving away from that model, where you would buy the licensing you need and host it on-premise. And along with that, they're moving away from customers being able to purchase and deploy on-premise their email software. That's not a bad thing. Our... That's not a bad thing. Our, our strategy plan that, that we brought forward last year actually recommended that we look at the online options specifically from Microsoft. Microsoft Exchange, it tends to be a, a large, clunky piece of software that's difficult to maintain. It takes up a lot of data, both in production and backups on the network. And whenever we have to apply patches to the software, either the software itself or the Windows operating system, it tends to require a long maintenance window just to get the basic security patches on. So, the IT strategy plan recommended we move that into the cloud just for ease of management and service delivery. There's a lot that comes with the cloud product that is simply better than we're able to offer on-premise. We have restricted most users to a one gigabyte mailbox size, just for trying to manage the storage that it takes up. If we move it online, we get to, most of those users would have 50 gigabytes. There are some other smaller accounts that two gigabytes is the minimum for, for users who, those are the ones who basically don't have a, a permanent desk job and, and access a shared computer. So some of the other benefits just of putting it in the cloud, we'd be better positioned for disaster recover scenarios. Right now, if anything happens, the Gray County administration building is a single point of failure. So if we lose an internet connection here, you're not likely going to be able to, to use email. You could send it again within the building, but, but not out. If we had any problems with our, with our data center that brought the whole thing down, you would, you would lose it all. If Exchange is in the cloud, then we really only need staff to have access to the internet, and then they can get access to their email and, and send it to anyone else. So there's that benefit. It also comes with in-place records management, so it is easier to manage the, the content in, in terms of our corporate records policy, records management policy. And you get something called Enterprise Discovery. So if you ever did have a request for information, you can search your entire Exchange server in place, rather than going through your mailboxes or old archives. So it's the, it was the recommendations from the strat plan, the fact that Microsoft is not going to support on-premise software much longer, the version that's coming out this fall is the last one, and the fact that our license needs to be renewed this year, that, that led us to this decision. As I've said in the report, we did look at a, a few different scenarios, either making this the last time we renew under the current terms and keeping everything on-premise. We looked at licensing all of our users compared with trying to manage so-called shared devices, where you don't have an individual account and the device itself is shared. And this one seemed to us to make the, the most sense. Some of the benefits that come along with it, first and foremost, I would like to stress the importance of Windows Enterprise licensing. Right now, we use something called Windows, it's essentially professional or retail. If you went out and bought a computer today, it's more or less the same version of Windows you would have. With enterprise licensing, IT staff can manage all of the devices that are connecting to their network. It allows them to have far more control over what users can do and apply security policies to those machines. One of the other big benefits there is with the regular Windows version 10, it, it rolls out updates on its own schedule. If you have the enterprise licensing, we can manage those and test them before we decide to schedule and release to, to users at large. And I will give one specific example that happened already this year. An update that was important for security was rolled out, and it made it so all of our virtualized applications, which includes our finance system, and GIS for a lot of users, was, we couldn't connect to it. The fix wasn't that hard, but we were without those for, for quite a while, just trying to figure out what happened and how do we get around it. So it would be nice to avoid circumstances like There are other applications that are just bundled with the new Microsoft licensing, so it's not really à la carte anymore. You just buy the 365 product, and you, you get the, the other applications that they are selling. A few of those would allow us to replace existing applications that we license, and that includes our, our current antivirus software. It includes our encryption, which actually, actually is the same company, to, to encrypt devices, which, the one we're paying for now has been great for Windows 7. It doesn't work properly with Windows 10 anyways, so that's a good solution for IT. It also includes a helpdesk management piece of software. So we use a couple right now. One of them is paid, that allow us to put, push out updates and applications for, sorry, updates for applications to those devices or to do remote support. We pay for that, it's included, the Microsoft version is included as well. So the only other thing I would like to add is that for 2018, we are covered with what we, with what we budgeted. We anticipated renewing this license, and we prepared to upgrade Exchange and Office. So we are covered for 2018, but the cost of the license is more than the, the previous one for the next two years after that. Questions?
Thank you for that. Any questions of Jody? Above your head?
I tried to keep it.
So, just quick, current, current system going forward would be 229, and this, which is, you refer it to as a better system, is 227. So, I mean, just on price, it's not a, you see it as a real strategic advantage for.
Yeah, like, like I said, I think Windows 10 Enterprise really should be the benchmark for an organization this size, trying to maintain the, the users and software on the network.
Counsel Fosbrook?
Thank you. So, CDW Canada, we have a relationship with them because we enjoy their consultation services as well as their purchasing power?
So, how that works with the, the consultation services, yes, we do purchase a, a lot of our equipment from them, because they are one of the approved OECM vendors. Microsoft has two flavors of audits, basically. Number one, they can impose it upon you, it's called a hard audit. They will come in, they will scan your network, they will find out what you're using, and you're responsible for truing up on that, that anniversary for your license. The other option is called a soft audit, which is similar, except then you, it's a situation like this, where you can, you can basically say, here's what we'd like to do with our licensing, rather than, whoops, we use too many, and, and we have to pay for it. And that's kind of the, the situation we find ourselves in now. So rather than finding those places where we fell out of compliance and spending the money to get back in, we're looking to renew with proper licensing and moving forward. Microsoft has preferred vendors that will do that at no charge, and so we contacted CDW regarding the renewal of this contract, and that was what they suggested. So the company that came in was called Envizio. They are the one who did our hard audit last year, and they, they did the soft audit this year at Microsoft's expense, essentially.
And we're also saving money on purchasing? Purchasing power? Like, you're getting this cheaper?
The, the main benefit we would have for purchasing is that we are, we have some licensing from the old contract that can probably be applied as a credit to the new one. Otherwise, the 365 contracts, they are under OECM, but they're fairly standard. There's not a lot of wiggle room in how you license those products.
Thank you.
Yes, Kevin?
I think, to help answer that question, too, that Ontario Education Collaborative Marketplace is a procurement process where collectively, there's all those corporations coming together, and so we are getting a better price going under that agreement. So, it has been put through a procurement process, and you are getting your, your best price here.
Looks like a win-win. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor, motion? Motion is carried. Thanks, Jody. Okay. Next one is that report FR CW1818 regarding the quarterly purchasing report for quarter two of 2018 be received for information. Counsel Eichels, and Seconder, Counsel Greenfield. Okay, who's going to present this? Sharon? No, no presentation?
We can answer any questions.
Why not? Hey, hi.
So, we, in purchasing, provide you with a quarterly report, advising of all of the awards from the directors and their managers between $25,000 and $250,000. And this is a list of said tenders. Any questions?
Looks like you're winning most of the time, coming in under budget.
End of the time.
Hmm?
Try our best.
Yeah, that's great. Okay, any questions at all? Yes, Counsel Fosbrook?
So, as an example, where it says micro-surfacing on Gray Road 14 for $200,000, between what point and what point on 14 are we spending $200,000 on?
I will provide you with that information.
Thank you.
You going to identify it later? Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Counsel Eichels?
This was through the Skidsteer for 117. Is that for transportation?
Yes.
How many pieces of attachment does that, just curiosity?
Only one attachment.
Okay.
Would you like to do a follow-up to your question, send your question?
If you could, that would be wonderful. Thanks, Sharon.
So you'll get that later on, to keep you updated? Okay, yes, John?
Just wanted to check on the, the two three-quarter ton trucks in Southgate. We had a tender through the same company, and we just received notice that they will not deliver, and we had to give it to the same. Is that the same kind of experience we're having here?
The fellow that was selling these trucks was telling them, so far, you know, cost that he has endangered the company's, is that, yeah. Our order went in before yours. It's really that simple. And it could only take so much of a hit. I believe the mountains also got the same letter you got, and the city of Long Sound.
So we're in there first?
We just got.
And ours are pink, right, or something like that?
And ours are.
Yeah. Okay. All right, good, thanks. Any other questions? That answers everybody's questions? Okay, let's call the motion. All in favor? The motion is carried. Thanks, Sharon.
It dodges.
Okay.
Perfect.
The, next one is that report CCR CW0918 be received, and that a public comment slash question period not be included as a standard, as a standing item on the committee of the whole agenda at this time. And comments will be brought to our, by our clerk. Madam Clerk?
Hoover and Seconder.
Hoover and Seconder, you're right on the job. Counsel Early, Counsel Mackey. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'm bringing this report forward as a result of a notice of motion that was passed in April of this year, and the request was to bring back a report on the inclusion of public question or commenting periods during the committee of the whole meeting. I did a bit of research, and I reached out to both county level and local municipalities to look at the current practices within the areas. And it was clear that local councils are more apt to include this provision within their procedural bylaws than were the upper-tier councils. A majority of local councils are having this done at their local, at their, at their council meetings. And it provides the individual, the opportunity to come and ask those questions at the local level. When I reached out to my counterparts in, at the county level, I only found one, and that's Dufferin County. I reached out as far south as Essex and as far east as Prince Edward, and certainly our surrounding counties as well. And Dufferin is the only one that does that right now. It's not a common practice at the upper tier, and as noted in the report, there are multiple ways of reaching your local councillors. Whether you are the mayor, deputy mayor, or councillor at a local level, or whether you are a, a county councillor, public question period is not the only way to do that. You certainly have the option, the rate pairs have that option of coming and speaking to you in person, phone call, email, or, as we note here, a, a scheduled delegation. And I will say that the county has a very robust delegation process. We, we have all kinds of different delegations coming on a regular basis, and I don't think we have a meeting where we don't have at least one delegation, and oftentimes, we have two or three. And what the delegation does is provides notice on the agenda, so we're meeting our accountability and transparency parameters. It also provides the opportunity for council to ask questions or provide comments, and hear the stories. Here's some, some of the stories like we did this morning, and then have a follow-up. We could, we often have presentations from them that we post to the website for further information. So if you're interested in that particular topic, you can come, you know that it's on the agenda, you can come and sit in the audience and hear that. You can get that contact information. If you aren't able to make it, you are certainly able to view the presentation on the website and have further contact, if you so choose, with the presenter of that information. So when I started looking at a number of different things, there are a lot of, there is a lot of variety around there of who does what. And again, it is at the local level, not so much at the, at the county level. And the variety was anywhere from, it had to be on the agenda, to it can be anything. It's before the meeting, it's after the delegations. There was a number of, of different things there. So my recommendation right now is that it not proceed at Gray County. However, if council chooses to request that it be added to that, then there would have to be some policies put in place as to how we would deal with those public question periods that are not formal delegations. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any questions? Yes, Counsel McQueen?
Well, thank you very much for the report. I'd just make a comment that we went to a process similar to what was, is being done at Southgate, where people have to register 15 minutes before to speak on items of the agenda, and they have three minutes. We used to have unscheduled delegations, and it was found that all of a sudden, council would get possibly, you know, they didn't see it coming. There's something coming, and they didn't see it coming. Where if it's on the agenda, they know it's on there, whatever. And the idea was, is if there's something that needed that last, last comment, or something from the public, we created that opportunity that Southgate has already had in place. So we, we find it works well. We don't, it doesn't get used very often, very seldom does it have that. But it's just that opportunity for the public, if they, if it's some information. There's really no dialogue from council, it's just information, you've got three minutes, you register for 15 minutes. You probably got that from our clerk, maybe, I'm not sure, but.
Through you, Mr. Warden. I did, through a number of, of contacts with my, with the local Gray County clerks, as well as the clerks from, from the county level as well. And some have the registration prior to it. Some have indicated that they had tried that and just couldn't make it work. And so there, as I said, there are a number of different ways of, that are, that's being handled, especially at the local level.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counsel Fosbrook?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Thank you for the report. Not to overlook the obvious, which is, and this is what brought us to, to try to address this at the local level. So, once an agenda is published, there's, it's too late to request to be a delegation to address that issue on that agenda. And there's been a fair amount of back and forth in how the planning process, and you're not going to get notice when it's coming until it's there. And so, to me, this is an opportunity to address that. And I don't believe, I should know for sure, I don't believe we have a restriction on the item has to be on the agenda in Southgate. If we do, then maybe I've overlooked, okay, so maybe we don't. I think I can say that there was some concern at how this was going to fly, and it's been a total non-issue. And I find it self-regulating in that, if people have the opportunity to stand where you are right now, they will be careful what they say. So, you know, I noted your comments in your report. I do believe that if we're not interested and willing and demonstrating our eagerness to hear from the people who we serve, then I have an issue with that. So, I understand that there's some procedural things that would need to take place. I understand that not every county's doing it. But I also believe that it's important to do, and that's why I brought the notice of motion in the first place. So I appreciate the report, but I won't be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Fosbrook. Any other comments from other members of the council? Seeing none, call the vote. All in favor? Opposed? All right, motion is carried. Thank you. Thank you. Verbal update on the community hub, is that coming from Savannah? Hi, Savannah.
I don't need a motion or anything. I can just go.
No, this is a verbal update.
Perfect, okay. Sounds good. Just wanted to make sure.
Go for it.
Okay. So since we last updated council, we've had the opportunity to talk with Blue Water District School Board to better understand their perspective on current status and future status of our project at the Sidnum School. So the board has completed an appraisal, which was part of their requirement under OREG 44498 for the Sidnum. And during that conversation, they did confirm that the valuation was based on a use of any purpose. It did not consider current designation, zoning, repairs, or maintenance. We explained the very difficult situation that their failure to try and negotiate with us put us in. Georgian College right now is making interim adjustments on campus to appease some of their immediate needs that have to be done by this September. And they, right now, are planning on starting programming September 2019 at the Sidnum. The provincial funding secured for renovations and retrofit for childcare centers also budgeted for the provincial fiscal 2018-2019 year. So we must have conversations now with the province about that funding and its ability to be carried through. And finally, with us as county council going into lame duck in two weeks from now, that also prevents decision-making over the course of the next several months until December, when the new council comes into place. So we are now in the negotiating period. And the board verbally instructed us that negotiations can happen outside of the 90-day window. They said because we were the only bidder in the process with an expression of interest, that that 90-day window, it just, it didn't matter as much. Though they did not confirm this in writing. So it is a verbal update from them, not a written update, that that 90 days can be overlooked. The board, at this point, cannot get a decision before September because they will not be calling their board back over the summer. They don't meet again until September, which does not help us because we cannot make any decisions until December. So that is why our question about that 90-day negotiating window, what happens? And they also did confirm that they would not be able to go public with this property unless there was a good conversation with us and Gray County and the school board agreeing that, you know, we're done and it would go public. So at this point, the province has recommended that we submit an application for the fair value offset stage, which was a new addition to the second round of the surplus transition initiative that we applied for to get into this community hub program in the first place. So that was introduced in the second round. We now have the application and are preparing to submit that. That application, however, does not just go to the minister, it has to go to the Treasury Board. And the earliest that that can happen would be this fall for consideration. So we've emphasized that between the necessary capital repairs and their asking price, we're really far apart on numbers. Looking at the fair market value definition versus appraised, we know that appraised is the value that was put on the property by the appraisal, where fair market value is really what a willing buyer and seller in negotiations would be willing to come to. So what our intent to staff is, at this point, is to enter into good faith negotiations with them over the course of the summer to the ceiling that you provided for us. But beyond that, no decision or finalization of any type of agreement could happen before December 2018. So it puts us about six months behind on the project. But that is where we are right now. And if there's any questions, please let me know. And if Kim has anything else to add.
Any questions of Savannah at this time? Counselor Fosbrook?
So without getting into... Information that we shouldn't, did we in fact get an appraisal value? I don't think we did, did we?
No, we did not do an appraisal. They did.
Right.
We used the comparables from what we know and from our knowledge of the area.
So I just wanted to refresh my memory. So we haven't seen an appraisal value?
Yes, we know what the value is.
We know the value, but they haven't seen...
They haven't, they have not provided us with the report that would have come to back up that value. We questioned them on the phone with regard to what guidance was provided to their appraiser.
Right.
And were essentially told that, you know, this was just the highest and best use of the property.
Right.
No assumptions around, as Savannah mentioned, it wasn't, you know, restricted in any way to do with the fact that it has an institutional zoning or the fact that it needs some significant capital repairs.
So next stage is we're not going to hear anything until at least September, is what you're saying?
We will be working with staff. Now, they are not available for the next five weeks. So we internally are working with that and putting the application together with the province. But once September comes back around, then we hope that we can go back into those negotiations. Because the board, they did say that they were not given a ceiling number to be able to go into negotiations with us. So no matter what, they can't do that until September.
Any other questions? Counselor Wright?
Just a thought here. What happens if they become a lame duck board?
Apparently, they will not become a lame duck. They go right until November 30th and then the new board will come in on the 1st of December.
I thought they already were.
Question, we've given you a ceiling. If, if, if you're able to negotiate a, a deal within that ceiling, does it have to wait until December to be ratified? So your, your would be covered if you...
We have your confirmation. We have a resolution in support of a ceiling. If we can work to that ceiling, then that will make our stuffers to do so.
All right, so that's what you're working towards?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, good. So that could happen. Counselor Body, you have a question? Who was first? Speak, forever hold your peace.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. I just wondered, the ceiling that we've put in place, are we at risk of losing this if we go into a lame duck situation?
I don't, I think that if we, if we negotiate with them up to the window that we have. So we're in a 90-day negotiating window right now that goes to September 21st. So we can work to the extent of that 90-day window and the ceiling that you've provided. If it appears that they're not willing to move at all, we're going to come back to you. We're watching closely what's happening with the province with that fair market value offset. Right now, I think what we've already heard today, that the province is making decisions as we speak about funding resources that may or may not continue to exist. So when it gets to September, if there's still a fair market value offset program to apply to, and see, that's the, if I can say, to me and with my discussions with the staff at the ministry, that's the challenge with that. As long as there's something in place, like a fair market value offset, where is the impetus to want to negotiate to a number? If the province is going to step in and make up the difference, why would anybody budge? It's, it would be in our best interest to lowball and their best interest to make the number whatever they think the number should be and let the province fill in the gap. So whether this, whether that particular program is, is available to us or not, right now, supposedly it is, although it seemed to have disappeared off the website.
Yes, they had to send us an extra link. And it is, what they asked for is much more than what was asked for in our original application, too. It is, it will not be an easy process to get this offset value.
Okay, so you're still working diligently to figure it out? And Counselor Body, you still have a question? Yeah, go ahead.
I was just going to say, with regard to anything you've got verbal, I would put it into a letter, send it to them, say, I'm just confirming that in such and such a date you said this. And maybe list a couple of things, we're acting in good faith. And if we have anything wrong, let us know, which they, they won't, just so they don't start slipping around. Pretty clearly, Bruce County would love to have a training center, and they're already promoting it over in Saukine Shores. They would love to have Fanchow at it. It's pretty important for Gray County to have Georgian College here. These schools have to provide programs to get the funding. So this is important for Gray County. I would be trying to get any money we can, any cooperation we can. I would encourage everyone to contact their, their trustee from the, the school board if, if they answer telephones or bite my tongue, say too much more. If they can hear their telephone. Anyway, try and get that message across of how important this is for Gray County and, and try and drive home that point. This is important and they need to know that and not be able to hide behind whatever they've hidden behind before and try and get this across the line soon.
Thanks, Counselor Body, for that advice. Yes, Counselor Bell?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So real quick, I agree with everything Mr. Body said. Also, Madam CAO and Mr. Mackey, is, my question revolves around, do we need to bring this back to the last meeting before our lame duck procedures with maybe the idea that we need to revisit the ceiling? Or is that too soon for that conversation? And I'm just thinking about getting ducks in a row.
Good question. Any comments? Okay, so...
We have the ability to bring something back directly to council. We're just in such a tough spot because we can't even have a conversation with the board right now because there isn't anyone to talk to.
Anyhow, you'll keep trying because it changes hourly.
And we'll continue to reach out to the province as well and see what update we can get from them. But yeah, we'll, we'll bring something back for you to consider. And that way, if you want to move in a different direction or further down the road, we'll make sure that you have the ability to make a decision about that next week or two weeks.
I think Counselor Body had a, had a good recommendation. Start to have conversations with your trustees and see if something can happen. Yes?
Mr. Warden, just to be clear, is there any risk if we don't increase the ceiling that between our lame duck period and December, that we'd be at risk of losing this opportunity?
Our 90-day window is 21st of September. If they so chose, or by the word of the regulation, if we don't have an agreement, then they can take this public and put it on the market for anyone to bid for. Now, they've told us verbally said no, but... Do that, as long as we're still at the table and we're, as long as we're still having conversations, they, they won't move to the next phase. But they also told us they would negotiate with us between the business committee and the board meeting, and that didn't happen either, so...
Yes, Counselor Pringle?
Mr. Warden, I, just further to that, Kim, we would have the option then of still following up. And if it was an open bid, we could, we could bid at that time.
Oh, to the public process? Absolutely.
Although we would be in lame duck likely, which would create some difficulty.
Okay, so it's alive and they're, they're monitoring it? Counselor Eichels?
Thank you, either to Savannah or Kim. There's nobody to talk to for the next five weeks? Like a missing?
We've been told that Rob Cummings is the person that we need to speak with and he is out of the office for five weeks and not available. So, yes. We were able to get the call two days before he left because we said we must speak to him before he leaves.
So there's only one? Wow. Wow, one person there. So is it only one person that runs the Blue Water School Board?
Okay, thanks. Okay, I think staff of, we'll attempt to create some miracles here. So, yes, Counselor Fosbrook?
So just to clarify, is lame duck any different at upper tier than lower?
No.
Forgive me. Did we pass a bylaw for delegation of lame duck? Okay, so I'm not really sure how that's a hurdle. Is it not sufficient? Like what empowerment does staff have if we get to lame duck with the status right now?
For generally speaking, for lame duck, we're limited on sale and acquisition of land, hiring and firing of officers.
So on the topic of the land?
Yes.
We have not sufficiently empowered staff to take this initiative further if required, if in lame duck?
With our delegation of duties, we've included a, a few lame duck items, including following the HR policies and the CAO's approval of unbudgeted expenses over $50,000. Those are the only things included in the delegation of duties bylaw at this time.
And could we, or could we have empowered you further?
Can, but you risk, you risk, when you get, you know this, I'm not telling you anything you don't know. It's just, you know, about where a future, a future council might...
Well, I mean, even if it was specific to this deal? Right?
Well, I think we could still, if we could get to a financial arrangement, I, with the board, I think we would want to be able to negotiate with them that this is where we're going and we would just get the whole thing ratified by the incoming council, once we had agreed on amount of money.
Well, there's the next council meeting, as was mentioned, and the staff may bring back some further information at that time. Okay, Savannah, I don't see any other questions, so continued high pressure on the, on the subject. Thank you. Okay. I know Anne Marie is off to a personal obligation that she has, so the administration billing, do you want any?
I can just quickly, quickly say, the landscapers, bless their hearts, have been here trying to get things done as best they can. The weather has not been very cooperative. The original agreement was looking at laying sod. I can't imagine that would be a good idea under these conditions. We are going to hydro seed, just because of some of the slopes and things like that. They figure that will take better. And they're hoping to do that, you know, in the, in the coming weeks. And we will get somebody to deal with the weeds and such like that, too. So, but other than that, I think everything's fine. We had court this week for the first time and I think everything went very well and people were very happy with, with the space and how functional it was. So that was good.
Okay, job well done. Okay, is there any other business? Yes, Counselor Greifel?
Mr. Warden, I was just wondering, at our last county council meeting, we developed a potential length of delegations at the AMO conference.
That's right.
Did it update on progress or lack of progress?
All of the delegations were submitted as directed by council. And I had confirmation, or Penny had confirmation, that they were received. And at this stage now, we wait until they tell us whether or not they are willing to entertain them or not.
Question? Any other, other business? Yes, Counselor Mackey?
Wasn't other business, it was just on, on the report in regards to the school litter pickup.
Right?
Right.
$25,000 is budgeted. What if more schools put in applications for litter pickup than what's budgeted? I mean, it's a great program and, you know, I think we should encourage it. But just, is it first come, first served, or how would that work?
Pat, do you want to have a crack at that?
Yeah, I'll try, I'll try here. It hasn't been close to being what the budget was, but if, if that were to happen, as long as we're not running out of roads, I think we'd, you know, deal with it for one year and then adjust the budget accordingly going forward. So we'd like to see more uptake in the program, too, really, but...
All right, thanks, Pat. Okay, don't see any other questions? Any notice of motions? Counselor McQueen?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And I guess this is with regards to, with regards to my being nominated from my county councillor colleagues here for sit on the county caucus of AMO. Since then, it's now been reported that there is an election for, running for three spots. And I guess I'm looking at the clerk, if I make, do I make a notice of motion? Because it says on our conference, on our conference and seminar bylaw that campaign expense at the county, of county councillors running for the office of municipal association will be paid subject to prior approval of county council. So I guess the process is, is I guess I have to make a notice of motion to get prior approval, I'm, I'm asking. Just according to the policy. So I guess I, I'm making that notice so that it can be on the next agenda, I guess, to get that prior approval.
So if you go ahead and do that, and then if you provide me with what you're looking for, then I'll...
No idea.
We'll work together over the next day or so and get something drafted.
Okay, thank you.
So it's noted that regarding county caucus elections at, at AMO.
I hear hospitality suite.
I hear hospitality suite. I hear.
And the wardens purview, and there isn't one.
Okay, thank you. I'll, I'll work with you, Heather, on that one. Thank you.
Thank you. Based on advice from former wardens, that. Okay, thank you. So adjournment, do I hear adjournment? Counselor Pringle? Anybody else for seconding? Counselor Bell?